All right, well, good morning supervisors and as Supervisor Rice said, it was an eventful week as far as our emergency response is concerned. And so I do have Chief Weber to start off, and then I have Dan Eilerman to talk about some of the emergency shelter preparations that we're doing. And then we'll have Dr. Willis give a COVID and air quality update as well. I want to mention that Chief Weber is only available for a brief time this morning, so he's going to give his update and then head back to the fire. So without further ado, Chief Weber.
Good morning. Thank you, Matthew. And you know, echo Supervisor Rice's thanks. You know, thanks to the Board of Supervisors, the entire county team that's been behind us through this event. It's much appreciated and the support is certainly helpful. The fire right now is probably north of 2,800 acres. Still calling it 5% contained, and I know that's a bit disheartening, but our control lines continue to be challenged daily. We have about 246 personnel assigned to the incident this morning. On a statewide view, we have over 1.2 million acres burning across the state. And the resource drawdown is as great as it's ever been. But the collaboration and cooperation between fires is constant. I just got off the phone with all of our cooperating Bay area counties, and we're working together as the most immediate threat is being dealt with. So rest assured, if this starts pushing into structures, we're going to get additional resources quickly. The weather's moderated. I think we all recognize that we've got a good fog layer in this morning, which is helpful. But we still had active fire all night, especially on the east side of the fire. If Al, if you don't mind bringing up the map, I'll just quickly go over kind of where we're at firewise. So if you take a look at this, 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 we're not able to get infrared flights last night. So the fire is a little bit larger than what you're seeing on the paper. But just to give you an idea, Division C is kind of that northwest piece, the D I B C. Division E up at the top on the north side, Division T as you come around to the right, and then Division W. We name these areas and then assign resources accordingly. The fire is on the south side is where we've had our problems the last 24 hours. And it's about 40 or 50 yards off of the Bear Valley Trail, if you're familiar with that. That trailhead starts right at the Bear Valley Visitor Center. And yesterday afternoon, we started getting spot fires in and around that area. That was the one of the trigger points we use for issuing the evacuation order of some of those areas. It's not in those structures, but we want to give people plenty of time to get out. The other area that's presenting us some challenges is on that north side, kind of between Division C and Division E Echo. And that's been a challenge where you see that H1. We've had the fire slop over the control line several times. We keep re-engaging, cutting more line, using bulldozers, aircraft, and any other resource we have available to us. Just as I think I mentioned before, the resources are very limited across the state. And we're having these challenges because we commit to one area and another sneaks past our control line. So we've got primary control lines, we're going direct, we've got secondary lines built, and then, and then on a third level contingency lines further out. But the majority of the fire growth and large amount of smoke you saw yesterday was from the east side of the fire, kind of the southeast corner, and it's moved down towards Bear Valley Trail. The fire on the north side, which is our challenge for the communities of Inverness Park, Inverness. You know, those lines are holding overnight. The fog was helpful. We're continuing to go direct there and put in line on those ridge tops. And we have trigger points established if it gets down on the drainage. And we'd move towards additional evacuation orders if that was necessary. It's not at this time. You know, I think that we appreciate the patience of the community. I know they want more concrete answers of when this will be out. How's it going to burn? It's challenging us every afternoon. It's not necessarily the weather that's driving it like we've seen in 2017 with the winds. This is predominantly because of the fuel in this area. With the exception of the north side of the fire that was burned in 1995, 25 years ago, the vision fire, the south side of this, and the majority of the fire is burning in an area with heavy timber and really no recorded fire history. So it's extremely challenging. Bulldozers can't work in that kind of ground to create enough, enough space. The fire was spotting a half mile ahead of itself yesterday, which is also challenging the lines. So there's no shortage of challenges. We're committed to this. Obviously, the state is, the federal government is, the Park Service has been great to work with. The team that has relieved our local resources in the management of this is on the ground. We're integrated into their, their management team with our operations folks. And we just, we appreciate everybody's patience. We have a press, regular press conference and community conference at 9:30 every morning. People can turn in for a little bit more detail. It's done by the operations group, and they're hearing the same briefing I'm hearing every day. So that's a, that's a good piece of information. And then again, be remiss if I didn't talk about making sure you're signed up for Alert Marin. And you're going to receive the evacuation warnings and orders. NICSOL is not where they're, they come out on, so we need you to sign up on that Alert Marin piece. And Dan's going to talk a little bit about the evacuation centers and stuff that the county has done. And if anybody, any of the board members have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Chief. Questions? Anyone? Getting those recaps and tuning into that 9:30 briefing has been really helpful. And Jason, just appreciate you keeping us up to date. And Dennis, I don't know if you just want to make a couple of comments with regards to what you're observing as part of the community in terms of folks really adhering to those warnings and being prepared, et cetera. I think, I think it'd be great to hear from you on this.
So thank you, Jason, and I just want to thank the county and the fire department and the sheriff's department. And even last night, there were Marin transit buses out there if they were needed to transfer people to the evacuation center. Just remind the community to stay alert, stay vigilant. We're still, much of the community is under a warning, and if we're told to go, we really need to go somewhere and get out of the fire danger and allow the firemen to do their work. And Jason, thanks again for doing a good job, keeping me informed and keeping the community informed as best you can.
And I think the only thing to add, and Jason, I know you're pushing this out, the team is, is we really need to discourage folks from coming to Marin to the coast. One, the air may not be as good as they think it might be, and we just, people need to stay away from the coast right now.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point. We're already challenged out here with the vehicles on the roads and limited access and things like that. So we, and our ambulances are stretched thin. We don't, we don't need more, more issues out here. So very good point.
Okay.
All right. The only thing I would add, Jason, is just stay safe. We appreciate, I know we all do. I speak for all of us in saying we appreciate the work that you're doing so much. And, and the folks that are out there fighting the fires. I think we all watched the video of the rescue of the two firefighters, and I hope you never see anything quite like that again. Yikes. So, so just stay safe and, and thanks for the work that everybody's doing.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Matthew?
All right. And next, we're going to go to Dan Eilerman for an update on how we're preparing for emergency shelters.
Good morning, board members. Dan Eilerman, Assistant County Administrator, working in the E O C. And first, I want to let you know, I think you know by now, we did proclaim a local emergency last week, and I did that after consultation with Supervisor Redoni. And what that does is it starts the process for us to then take subsequent procedures. And on your consent calendar today, on Consent A3C is a request for your board to ratify that proclamation. And presuming your board would approve that on your consent calendar today, then we have the ability to facilitate additional state and federal assistance with regard to these efforts. So last week, it was the extreme heat emergency and rolling blackouts and the start of the Woodward fire. And you just heard from Chief Weber on the continued activation of the Woodward fire. So that will enable us to also facilitate reimbursement of costs as needed. You know, more to the point with regard to last night, as a result of the orders that were issued, we set up a temporary evacuation point, sometimes called a TEP, at Marin Center in front of the Veterans Memorial Auditorium. And we had about 16 to 18 staff set up between 6:00 PM and 10:00 PM last night. The good news is we're ready. I think what turned out is that West Marin residents had already planned ahead. I think they found alternative accommodations. And we did not have any evacuees show up to Marin Center last night. But we will remain vigilant today, you know, pending the potential for additional evacuation warnings and or orders today. And just to speak for a moment, a temporary evacuation point as opposed to a shelter is in the age of COVID-19, we want to avoid to the extent that we can, any congregation of large numbers of people. So we are coordinating directly with the state such that if evacuee show up to our temporary evacuation point, we will, with state approval, accommodate them with a room, a hotel room. We did have information last night that we had some 80 rooms available. And again, none was needed last night, but the state will, with approval, accommodate evacuees and hotel rooms as available and as needed. And if for some reason that did not work, then we would have a shelter available for any evacuated residents. And so that's a tremendous new relationship we have with the state, and that became activated just yesterday afternoon. We're really happy that that was able to be pulled together. And again, we are planning contingencies just going forward. A number of people in the E O C, too many people to name, particularly Health and Human Services, Human Resources, Activating Disaster Service workers. We stand ready for any additional warnings or evacuations as be necessary. And I'm happy to answer any questions your board may have.
Thanks, Dan. Questions for Dan at this point? Okay, Dan, it just.
A quick one, Dan, if, thank you for the report. If you could elaborate a little bit with both COVID shelter needs and wildfire shelter needs now emerging, just how that is being, is essentially being coordinated at this time in terms of providing shelter?
So the intelligence that we're getting from even Apples, Nomah Counties, for example, who are experiencing far worse wildfire problems than we are currently, is that they are coordinating with the state as well to identify hotel rooms as they're available. And again, the state is covering the costs, you know, for those hotel rooms, including parking and tax. And so long as those hotel rooms are available locally, we will accommodate those. That enables us to isolate evacuees in rooms as opposed to being congregated in shelters. And from a public health perspective, I think that's the recommended path. And we're also following up on that path as well. So thus far, again, with no evacuee showing up last night, we're not counting on that continuing. We're going to be ready for any contingency that's necessary. And should we run out of hotel rooms working with the state, either locally or regionally, then we have sheltering contingencies set up as well to accommodate additional numbers.
All right. And then just to make note, we will, we have tentatively calendared for an October meeting, I believe, a fuller update on our general emergency preparedness and P S P S preparedness and fire season preparedness coming up in October that will get into more detail of what's going on more broadly. Okay. Yeah, Dan, any?
We're going to go to Dr. Willis. You're okay, Beth.
Great. Thank you. Good morning, supervisors. Good morning, community. Al, could I, my slides? I'm going to provide an update on our COVID-19 status. I'll start with the numbers and then some of the key strategies for this week, and then touch briefly on air quality. Next slide, please. This is our cumulative cases so far in Marin County, 3,706 cases since the beginning of the pandemic for us in Marin. Next slide, please. Next slide will be a table of, I'm sorry, that, yes, that was right. This, this breaks that down by age, and what this shows is that majority of our cases are people aged 19 to age 49. And that, that's a pattern that has really emerged, starting in June. Next slide, please. We've tested 66,630 persons or that many tests in Marin County. We've had a total of 129 people in the hospital with 68 total deaths. There was an increase in six deaths reported yesterday. Importantly, those are not all deaths that happened yesterday. When we, we rely on the coroner to determine what the cause of death is, and we work with the coroner to, to make sure that those are being reported. The, sometimes the cause of death takes days or even weeks to be determined if there's, if there's other potential causes and waiting toxicology screening, et cetera. So those six deaths that were reported yesterday, actually, there was only two deaths over the weekend, and the majority of those happened over the previous weeks. Next slide, please. This is the curve. When we talk about flattening the curve, it's, it's really the chart that corresponds to the number of daily new cases. And this, I added indicators of when we had begun the initial shelter in place order in mid-March. And then showing where we began the reopening in the beginning of May. And what this shows is that, you know, we, we recognize that as we reopen and we engage in more mobility across the community, we do see a corresponding increase in virus transmission and disease. And that's something that we have had our eyes wide open around and recognize that that's the, that's the risk that we're trying to balance here. The only way we can continue to reopen more safely is if we're all doing our parts to cover our face, practice physical distancing, and for our businesses to practice those safe, you know, safe protection plan that we've, we've helped them develop. Fortunately, now we see a decrease in the number of, we have flattened the curve. That second large wave has flattened in July and is now on its way down. And that seems to be a reliable pattern of improvement. Next slide, please. This is a number of hospitalizations we've seen. Basically, you know, the picture here is that through the month of July, we had between 20 and 35 individuals in the hospital daily. And now in, in August, the last few weeks, it's been between, between 10 and 15 people in the hospital. So corresponding to that decrease in the number of cases we saw on the previous slide, we've also seen improvements in our hospitalization rates. Next slide, please. Now I'm going to get into the, the county monitoring list and some of our shelter in place policies. So we are, as you know, among those majority of California counties that are on the state-developed monitoring list, based primarily on our incidents. We have more than 100 cases per 100,000 residents over 14 days. That's the criteria the state uses to determine which county should be more closely monitored. This map corresponds to all those counties that are on the monitoring list. And it's something like 36 counties. And the vast majority of the residents of the state of California are in fact in counties on the monitoring list. Next slide, please. There's been a lot of interest in what are the criteria that the state uses to determine which county should be on the monitoring list? And how is Marin County performing relative to those indicators? So we've established a new dashboard that's dedicated to that particular purpose on our website. If you, if you go to coronavirus.marinhhs.org and look at the data tab, under that, there's an indicators tab, and that's where you'll find these metrics. And I'm just going to go through them briefly. There are five of them. The first is case rate. As I mentioned, we have to have fewer than 100 cases per 100,000 residents for 14 days to be off of the monitoring list. And we need to be in that status for at least two weeks before we'd actually fall off that list. This line here corresponds to the number of cases we've had over that two-week interval going back. And it shows the, what the Epi curve also showed, which is improvement over time. Our current rate is 112 per 100,014-day case rate. Next, please. We also need to have a testing rate of above 150 per 100,000 residents over seven-day average. And we are performing, you know, well with regards to ongoing testing. We have between 350 and 400, and this is again per 100,000 residents. This isn't total numbers of tests. This is per 100,000. So if we want to know how many tests that actually is, you have to multiply it by, by 2.5 because we have 2.5 number of 100,000, we have about 250,000 residents in the county, 260. Next, please. This is our percent positivity. We also have to have a percent positivity of less than 8%. If we have a percent positivity of greater than 8%, obviously, the concern would be that we may be either under testing, you know, only testing those people who are most likely to be infected, or that we're seeing dramatic increases in the prevalence of the virus. Our percent positivity now has continued to decrease, which is another reassuring sign that we're seeing less transmission in our community and is closer to 3%. Next, please. Another indicator the state looks to is hospitalizations. Obviously, there's a concern around, you know, potential surge. If we're seeing increased transmission, increased cases, can our hospitals keep up with that demand? The metric that's used there is the daily percent of patients in the hospital that are confirmed to be COVID-19. If, if we get above 30% of all the people in hospitals in Marin County are there because of COVID-19, that's obviously a sign that our system is being stressed by, by COVID-19 incidents. And so we're following this. We get twice daily reports from all of our hospitals regarding census in COVID-19. And we're, we're just below 10%. Now, next, please. And this is the last of the indicators that we're, that we're looking at in terms of the state metrics. And this is similar to the previous in terms of hospital, trying to assess hospital surge capacity, and it has to do with ICU beds. What's important about this is this is the percent of ICU beds available. This does not necessarily only mean COVID-19. This is any ICU bed. And, and you can see that it, that we're close to the threshold of at least 20% of our ICU beds being filled. The, the concern about this with regards to wildfires or even influenza is that it is not unusual in Marin County, because we have three hospitals, for our ICUs to be nearly full. And if we see surges in cases of influenza, it's not uncommon in some years, you know, some flu seasons to actually have our ICUs full. And we're having people who would otherwise be in the ICU being managed on, on the medical floors. And so this is a reminder to us that we need to do everything we can to, to prevent additional surges in COVID-19 cases and go ahead and get that flu shot when it's available. It's actually available, and some providers already have the flu shot. But we want to make sure we're protecting our ICU beds because if we fill our ICUs with influenza, we may actually trip out of this indicator and not be able to do any further reopening because of the concern around surge. Next, please. So now to, what does that mean to us in terms of our reopening? We would be removed from the state monitoring list when we have below 100 cases per 100,000 residents for two weeks. When we are off that list, schools may reopen to classroom-based learning without a waiver from Public Health currently because we are between 100 and 200 cases per 100,000. The only way for schools to reopen to classroom-based learning is through a waiver obtained from Public Health. I talked about that last week. There is a statewide order, and it's important for us to recognize that the majority of our shelter in place right now is actually tied to what the state, what the governor has indicated is possible across the state. The statewide order currently closed to all counties are bars, both indoors and outdoors, and indoor restaurants, movies, and museums. So regardless of our status on the monitoring list, those sectors are closed across the state. And then for counties that had been on the monitoring list, again, this is, this is the majority of counties across the state, there are no indoor operations allowed for personal care services, fitness centers and gyms, non-essential offices, and indoor malls. So even when we fall off the monitoring list, unless there, unless and until there's a change in the statewide order, we would not be able to move forward in these sectors. However, the governor has signaled that there are likely changes in the statewide order forthcoming in the next few days potentially. And, and I had a conversation with the Department of Public Health over the weekend, and they're discussing, based on progress statewide in case rates, issuing some wider, wider permission to do more, more reopenings. But we don't know what the specifics are there yet. Regardless, you know, because we're still about, above 100, and then we would need an interval of time below 100 before we could make any changes. I anticipate that, you know, given that would be at least three weeks, that there would be changes in, in the state order prior to that time that would determine what we're able to, to open or not. Next, please. Now I'm going to jump to, to air quality. Obviously, we're dealing with a collision of, of emergencies here with COVID-19 and now with wildfires and air quality. One of the questions that's been most common over the last few days is where should we look for and determine what our air quality actually is? Air quality is measured by the AQI, the air quality index, that basically looks at the number of fine particles in the air. Those are the ones that are most harmful if we read them in. It happens that, you know, the AQI is actually very closely tied to what we can observe visually. So one, one simple way to know what the air quality is in terms of the potential harmfulness of being outdoors is actually just to observe what's happening in your, in your region at any given time. Because it changes so quickly, sometimes that's actually the best method. And it does correspond, what you see corresponds to, to the, to the harmfulness potentially from a pulmonary standpoint. But the, the, the metrics specifically are two. There's airnow.gov and Purple Air have emerged as the two primary methods for measuring and reporting air quality. I'll just briefly review those. Airnow.gov is this, is the sort of standard governmental method for measuring air quality. It's EPA-regulated meters. There's one in Marin County. It's located in Centerville. It's accurate. It's calibrated regularly. It's updated hourly. And the data from that meter is combined with other data for modeling forecasts. And airnow.gov is a good place to go to, and you can type in your zip code, and it'll give you air AQI and forecasts. Next slide, please. Another tool that's been emerging and really came into popularity last year with the wildfires is, is Purple Air. Purple Air is a low-cost home monitoring. It's a, it's a way of crowdsourcing data for air quality. It has a lot of benefits in that you can see, this is the map that corresponds to, to Purple Air compared to the previous map, it only had one dot for Marin. This has multiple, and those correspond to homes and other settings where people have acquired the air now monitor, the Purple Air monitors. However, they're not regulated. There are some accuracy concerns in terms of if the battery is well-powered, et cetera. There are many more sensors across the county. They're updated frequently every few minutes, and they're available online. If you just search purpleair.com, you'll get the, and then type in your zip code, you'll get a map similar to what you see here. There are microclimates, obviously, throughout Marin, given that the wrinkles in the hills and valleys. And the air changes, the air quality changes frequently in Marin County as ebbs and flows of wind and smoke. And so it needs to be interpreted with caution because there are frequent changes in AQI in place and time. Next, please. So those, basically, you know, I, I myself look at both. I look at the airnow.gov and also the, the Purple Air, just as a, as a caution. If you're looking at the Purple Air, some of those, there may be some eddies or ebbs in, in, in air quality where you might have one reading that is very high. And then it's only that way for a few minutes, and it's important not to sort of attach ourselves to that as being the, the fixed value for that area. Similarly, you know, it's previously low, low measures sometimes. These are the, the, the way that we actually stratify or organize air quality. There are six different, six different levels. Good air quality is defined as an AQI of 0 to 50, moderate is 51 to 100. USG is unhealthy for sensitive groups. That's 100 to 150. Unhealthy is 150 to 200. Very unhealthy is 200 to 300 AQI, and hazardous is greater than 300. Next slide, please. And I'll just finish by corresponding this, you know, our air quality concerns with what's happening with COVID-19. The basic message is, is to stay indoors with windows and doors closed. Where, where are, where are concerns around COVID-19? Where where are where are concerns around COVID nineteen and our concerns around air quality converge is in our recommendation to shelter at home and in place with your household. Indoor gatherings remain unsafe. There's obviously a concern that for for COVID nineteen, we have been recommending moving things outdoors. For air quality concerns, we recommend moving things indoors. One concern is that if if there were outdoor gatherings planned with this with your social bubble or outdoor faith based gatherings or even outdoor dining, that those things are unsafe based on air quality at any given time. The answer is not to simply move those things indoors because an indoor gathering remains unsafe from a COVID nineteen standpoint. So canceling or rescheduling those is the best solution. Covering our face is important still. But in past years, we have sometimes recommended that people who cannot avoid prolonged exposure outdoors should wear an N ninety five mask because they do felt that those very small particles. Unfortunately, at this time, we don't have a sufficient supply of those masks. And instead, the answer is really to remain indoors. Avoiding prolonged outdoor activity is one of the key common themes in around any poor air quality event. Symptoms this year, obviously, another concern was that the symptoms of of COVID nineteen and the symptoms that people sometimes experience when they're exposed to poor air quality overlap cough, sore throat. So contact your medical provider if you have concerns. Importantly, if you are evacuated, continue to cover your face and practice physical distancing through that experience. And as Dan mentioned, and it sounds like was put into practice last night with evacuations west Marin, we're encouraging people to first seek lodging in hotels, motels and short term rentals, seeking lodging with family and friends where you're not gathered together in a congregate setting. Even car based sheltering or camping is preferable to having to be sheltered in a in a single large space the way we had in the past approached sheltering. And then a reminder with Jason already mentioned, but just to register at alertmarin.org. Next, please. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Willis. Matthew, anything else? And then we'll go to board questions.
Yeah, I just have a few other items, just as part of the administrator's report. First, I know your board had heard testimony over the last few weeks about the Great Plates Program. And I did want to point out on consent calendar B, CB two, we have approval for nearly a million dollars for the Great Plates Program for tamper contingent on the state and federal approval. I want to thank Benita and her team. The it's a very staff intensive process to get federal reimbursement for the Great Plates Program. And he is available to answer any questions you may have either on consent calendar B or after public testimony. Secondly, I wanted to, we also had been getting discussions around immigration policy issues. And I just want to announce that we are planning an afternoon session on September fifteenth to talk about immigration policy issues and sanctuary issues that have been raised. And we'll have staff available to give background and recommendations at that time. And so encourage people to look at our subsequent agenda before that's post. And then lastly, I know Supervisor Rice is going to be speaking to this under Board Matters. But Brian Crawford, our CDA Director is retiring after thirty two years with the county and twelve years as the Director. And I just wanted to personally thank him for his work in partnership over the years. That as your board knows, the CDA Director is a challenging job. And I think Brian did it with humility and grace. And so thank you, Brian, for all your work for the county. And that's it.
Okay, board members, any any questions? Supervisor Sears.
So, Dr. Willis, thank you for your presentation. Excellent, as always. You know, there were the North Bay fires last year and we had evacuations from those areas and particularly from skilled nursing facilities. I think that's a sort of a an alarming prospect, given our COVID nineteen experience and the concentration of cases in in sniffs. So I'm wondering, what are the conversations between counties? I I I'm aware that other counties have evacuated more people. How is this being handled and how is it being planned for, given some of those complexities that you referred to earlier?
With regards to the skilled nursing facilities or more more broadly?
Well, there was both.
Yeah, I mean, with with regards to skilled nursing facilities, our goal is to to support support those facilities as much as possible to to avoid any evacuations. We actually have a task force that is an evacuation prevention task force. Recognizing that we, you know, we saw that there was staffing shortages when there was cases in in skilled nursing facilities. Obviously, the majority of those cases when they happen or outbreaks when they happen is staff bringing them in. So in fact, the staff are are obviously unable to work. So they're used as part of the workforce there. And then other staff are not, they've been exposed or unable to report to work. So there's a there's staffing shortages. We have acquired additional staffing resources that we can actually bring into this, you know, a module of staffing that we can actually assert into a facility if they're running short on staffing to prevent them from having to evacuate. So that's, that's always been important and it's even more important now with COVID nineteen. With regards to the wider concerns around, you know, population based sheltering, I think everyone, everyone recognizes that that only as a very last resort should we be gathering people together in in conventional congregate shelters. And 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 even in those cases, when when people are unable to find lodging with family or friends or in a hotel motel or short term rental, that in the parking lot, camping in the parking lot is preferable to coming indoors. So people are actually setting up tents. And we have, we have support for that at at our at our civic center park or sheltering operation. There's actually space between parking spots for people if they have those resources to actually camp in that space. So we're working to, you know, to try and be as innovative as we can to prevent that that image of a large room full of people. And then the COTS, where we do have COTS established, they are six feet apart to to optimize physical distancing. So there are a variety of strategies that we hope we would exhaust before we had to bring people into that into that congregate setting.
Great, thanks very much.
Supervisor Connolly.
Thank you, Dr. Willis, as always. So the trend lines are looking good in terms of the case numbers per a hundred thousand. Those continue to go down. One question we get, and it's a fairly broad one, but hoping you can weigh in is what specifically is Marin doing to get off the watch list? What steps are we taking that will get that number below the hundred positive tests per a hundred thousand over fourteen days? And secondly, as we get off the watch list and recognizing no one has a crystal ball, a sense of the timing of looking into the future of when things, for example, like indoor restaurants can reopen. The issue being that with air quality issues that may not be going away, with inclement weather that we'll face heading into the fall and winter. Basically giving businesses a sense of how things may play out in that regard as well.
Yeah, I mean, to your first question, you know, what are we doing specifically to reduce our case rates? I think that's been our our kind of primary objective collectively together as a community for the past few months. And the strategies have really been clearly defined in in terms of, you know, the question is, what what can we do to promote, you know, small businesses reopen and and returned indoor dining? The answer is that we can cover our faces and 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 respect physical distancing and cover our cough, not come to work if you're feeling some, you know, having symptoms. Those are the things we've been saying all along. It really is just a matter of maintaining our vigilance around those things and not relaxing prematurely. We're, we are making progress. I'm always hesitant to be too celebratory at this point because I think we are in a vulnerable place. And we could easily lose those gains that we've achieved. We've seen that before and could see that again. I think one of the threats that we need to all be aware of is A with the wildfires and evacuations regionally. The virus moves regionally, you know, Marin is one, is part of a larger human ecosystem, especially within the Bay Area. Santa Cruz evacuated one quarter of their entire population. So there is a lot of disruption in the in in people across the Bay Area right now that is leading to unfortunate new forms of mixing. And and we need to see what that means in terms of transmission. And I think that's obviously something the state's going to be looking at closely. The other is that flu season is coming. And and that's another, you know, as people, you know, as seasonally as people move indoors more, there's more transmission of of other respiratory viruses that could compound this issue. So there's a few wild cards there that I think we really need to be aware of as we as we seek to reopen. So our principle will be to, you know, again, looking at our data, keeping our eyes wide open, optimizing those personal practices we can all, we can all adopt and and taking it one step at a time within the framework of what the state allows. I think right now, the the simplest answer to your question of when, when can we we open restaurants and indoor? Right now, we're not able to do that because the state prevents prevents that from happening anywhere in the state. So the first would be just where, where, what, what, what is available to us from that menu of of options that the state would allow? And then from that, we would have to make a local decision.
Looking at current activities such as outdoor dining, outdoor personal services. Do we have a sense of how many or if any positive cases have resulted from those activities? Are we tracking them?
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, we're always, as we reopen sectors and you saw from the graph, you know, as we started reopening, we started to see more cases. And obviously, we want to know specifically as possible, where is that transmission occurring related to reopening? So we asked that, those questions when we do the contact investigation. We have not found any specific cases yet that we can link to a personal service that occurred outdoors. Doesn't mean it hasn't happened, but it does, it is a, it is a reassuring sign that we haven't seen any, certainly probably not seen any significant numbers.
Dennis.
Thank you, Dr. Willis. Maybe a redundant question, but can you talk about the trends in the canal? And are they similar to what we're seeing countywide?
Yeah, we are seeing a a lower percent positivity in the canal, which is super reassuring in terms of getting in front of this. We had set a goal of flattening the curve in the canal. And that's, you know, that flattening that curve is the first step is is reducing the acceleration. And I think that's, we're seeing signs that we're making progress there again, based primarily on a lower percent positivity among canal residents who have been tested.
Okay. Judy, if no questions, I don't have any either. And I think just thank you, Dr. Willis, and the rest of the team for the report and the community for doing the good work. We seem to be doing the right thing at this point.
Can I just close with one, one reminder, and I should have included this earlier? We had talked about, you know, climate change as a public health threat previously. And identified last year, we're talking about some of the ways in which infectious diseases can be related to climate change, especially with vectors and mosquito, mosquito borne illnesses as latitudes start to increase with with warming. I just think it's an important, as as we as we grapple with the acute and emergent needs we're all facing, both with COVID nineteen and now with wildfires, to have that moment where we step back and recognize the way in which the climate itself is contributing to these stresses that we're experiencing so that we we carry those lessons into our, into the policies and personal behaviors we adopt when the dust settles a little bit around this. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Willis. If you could pick up on explaining our our program around our homeless folks and the in our hotel program and then also with regards just generally to health services and their availability to residents in Marin County.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I think I'd like to start by just rearticulating the the way we think about service from a public health standpoint is the is the principle of that the highest attainable standard of health is the is the fundamental right of every human being. And that's, that's from the UN Declaration of Health and Human Rights. And I, you know, I think throughout my own career, I think it's a sentiment that and a and a principle that is shared by everyone that I work with here in Marin. So we do see this as a human rights issue. And if there's a, if there's a breach in anyone's access to that highest attainable standard of care, that's a, that's a breach in us achieving that that principle. And and so the question becomes not whether, but but how? And so these are process questions. So I just want to walk through the process. So the question is, how do we, how do we care for people who are COVID nineteen in in hotels? I'll just briefly walk through the the intake step. So there's, there's two different pathways for for determining whether someone may need to be hotelled who has COVID nineteen. One is from the community. So that's through our our contact tracers. We, every time there's a a diagnosis of COVID nineteen, we have a team of up to sixty, sixty individuals who are making phone calls continuously into the community to follow up on new cases. And there's an interview that occurs to determine who they may have been exposed to and and who they may have exposed. It's called a contact investigation. And in that process, there's also determination of what their living situation is and whether or not they may need housing support or income support or food support or any other supports. When that's determined that they may need that kind of support, they are connected to a case manager and another team called the Syracuse team. And that team will reach out to that person and and get them tied into a hotel room or other services they may need. We have hotels throughout the county that have been set aside for our COVID nineteen response. And they're placed in one of those hotels. There's now one in the in the canal area. And there's that we had been using a hotel in Novato. There's one in South Marin. We have, I think, one hundred and eighty seven hotel rooms collectively set aside for for COVID nineteen response. That's both for homeless individuals as well as 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 COVID positive patients. Once that person is put into, so that's one intake form is is through the through the community, through our contact tracers. Those are, and then there's the healthcare pathway, right? So these are individuals who may be in the care of a healthcare provider or just being discharged from a hospital or an emergency department where the the ER doc might say, hi, I have someone here. Doesn't need to come into the hospital, but isn't able to isolate safely at home. We need to get them into a hotel. There's more direct pathway from the healthcare system into that care management team where they can actually be directly placed into a hotel. And then when they arrive, there's, there's a team that that cares for them. And and the way that is, is there's a, there's a social workers who are onsite, who stay on, maintain a presence onsite. And we'll welcome that person. There's, there's a care package that's offered. We have pulse oximetry, there's a thermometer, hand sanitizer, other things as well as food. So they get three meals a day and getting regular check ins by the by the the caseworkers who are there at the facility. If there's a medical need that emerges in that context of that continuous support, that will be directed to that that person's provider. So we're we're tying people through that system to their medical provider. Ideally, their their primary care doctors and others are in contact with them. If they don't have a medical provider, they can actually, we're working with Marin County clinics, actually become the de facto medical provider for people who don't otherwise have insurance. But obviously, nine one one is is always available and it would have to go back to the hospital if they failed that that disposition, if you will. And our hospitals now have the capacity to manage people who would come in on that basis. So that's the, that's the the support that's offered. What, you know, obviously, what we rely on is those intakes, either it's from the community, from our contact tracers or from our healthcare partners or any other source so that we know who's there. What, you know, the particular instance, and I don't want to get hung up to on 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 one individual because this is a systems issue that we're trying to make sure that we're meeting the needs of everyone. There wasn't, there was one inmate from San Quentin Prison. You know, tragic event, you know, related to, and I think we've been, we've been clear that 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 entire experience at San Quentin was a tragic and preventable outbreak with a lot of related harms. A lot of related harms, and this was, this was one of them. Mr. Maddow was released by CDCR. Through their Project Hope program, which is not our program, that is, that is a state run program into a hotel. He's a, he was a Sonoma County resident released into a Marin County hotel with zero communication. And so, you know, we we are obviously, as that principle, wanting to support anyone who needs support. It's extremely frustrating when we learn three days later that someone had been placed in a setting that we. Had other people that we were met met helping care for, but we're not aware of him. He had to, he had to bring his needs forward. And as soon as, obviously, as soon as his needs were determined that he hadn't been cared for, we immediately stepped in, offered him a meal, evaluated him medically. Made sure that he was tied back to CDCR. I had several conversations with CDCR saying, A, this needs to be fixed now. And B, in the future, we need to know immediately, anytime you're releasing someone to one of our hotels. Even if they're being cared for by you. And. And Project Hope resumed care for Mr. Maddow on day two, after we had offered him a meal on that evaluation. So he was under their care in that setting. Unfortunately, this is a gentleman who had been actually diagnosed with COVID nineteen in June at San Quentin State Prison. And and we don't know this, the coroner is still working on the circumstances passing. He was found down in his room by his Project Hope support system that had arrived to offer him a meal and and given the support that they had been offering. So we're waiting for the coroner's final determination. We know that COVID nineteen does have some lingering longer term effects for some people, especially cardiovascularly. There's some coagulopathies and other issues with blood clotting that might lead to increased risk for heart attack or stroke. It's possible that his endocidin, you know, his his infection that had happened in June might have contributed to that. The 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 swab that was positive when he was. Found deceased was more likely just that, you know, enduring viral positivity from from that infection that he, we knew he had in June. Rather than a second infection. But that's, that's something, again, that the coroner is trying to determine. So hopefully, that offers you some some perspective on that event. We have worked now with CDCR, there's another, you know, as a as a better example, there was another inmate that was being released through CDCR. And is, and it was a much better process where we were informed in advance. Their system, Project Hope, was actually activated and they were actually able to care for that person. And we were, and we were able to check on that person as well, just to verify that that system was in place. So hopefully, there were some lessons learned there. And I I just, we we share, we share the community's concern around how that was managed.
Thank you, Dr. Willis. And it's a good, it's just a reminder too, that we have in our hotel, in the program that was established right at the beginning of the shelter in place. And the hotels were primarily at that time focused on our most vulnerable, a lot of our homeless folks, people at high risk. We have partners working those hotels with us, supporting the people there. We had disaster service workers also manning those, manning and womaning those hotels. I did some shifts there and I just, it's, it's, it's been a really important program for supporting people. And I can tell you from firsthand experience, everybody, everybody that's come into those hotels is treated with dignity and with respect. No matter who they are, where they come from. The color of their skin. And I think it's actually something we can be proud of, maybe not perfect, but lessons being learned. And then, Dr. Willis, too, it's an important time to shout out also the incredible work you did and your team did working with. San Quentin and the CDC and trying to shore up what was a was a horrible calamity there in terms of bringing COVID into that system. So just thank you for that. Thank you for the detailed explanation and to our partners who are helping us in in that vein.